Good to go, Judge.
Recording in progress.
There we go. All right. Sorry about the delay. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, August 4th, 2022, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, the Humboldt County Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 until further notice. Go to the county website. You can figure out all the different ways you can join us. And with that, I would ask that we call the mean to order and have everybody join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right. Trip. A roll call, please.
Alan Bongio?
Present.
Brian Mitchell? Noah Levy?
Present.
Mike Newman?
Present.
Melanie McCavver?
Here.
Peggy O’Neil? And Thomas Mulder?
Here.
All right. Looks like we have a quorum. We have five out of seven, and maybe we’ll get some late joiners. All right. So with that, Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications to the agenda.
All right. So we’ll move on to public comment. This is the time when anybody who wishes to speak to the commission on any item that is not on tonight’s agenda can speak to us. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to talk to the commission? And I gotta see if there’s anybody on the phone. All right. Anybody who wishes to address the commission from the phone? We’re seeing no hands up. All right. I’m gonna close the public comment, and we’re gonna move on to the consent agenda. And we have the review and approval of the minutes from... Director, do we need to go through every one of those, or can we just say from a period to a period?
You can say from a period to a period. They’re all identical.
I’m gonna do that just to expedite things unless there’s somebody who has something they want polled. So from March 3rd, 2022, all the way to June 2nd of 2022... Oh, excuse me. To July 7th of 2022. So I would ask if there’s anybody who wishes to have any of those polled, or if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All right. A motion second. Any discussion?
Just appreciate the efforts of the staff to bring us up to date with the action summaries. Thank you.
All right. Trip, you’re up.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Motion carrying unanimous. Thank you, Trip. All right. So we had no items polled, so that brings us to public hearings and the continued public hearing for Nordic Aquafarms. And the director asked to speak at the beginning, and then I believe Nordic is going to follow with some follow-up to public comment the last time.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to identify where we are in this public hearing for Nordic. We went through the public comment period, and that was closed last time. And just to make it clear, that means not only is there no more oral testimony that will be taken, but the record is closed too in terms of receiving written testimony as well. So normally with a meeting like this, what would happen is that the applicant would be given an opportunity to rebut, and then staff would be given the opportunity to respond to anything that we’ve heard from the public or from the applicant. We have looked at all the public comments. We’ve gone through them. We haven’t... We don’t see anything in the public comment that’s not thoroughly addressed in the EIR. We do recognize that there’s a lot of information in the EIR, and so our comments, and I believe the applicants too, are really going to focus on some things that we heard that could use some clarification and highlighting for the public and for the commission’s better understanding. And with that, I will give it back to you, Chair, and allow you to...
Okay. So I would ask Nordic if they would like to present to the commission. I believe that they had a short presentation they wanted to do.
Good evening, Planning Board Commissioners. My name’s Nick King, and I’m the Vice President of Quality at Nordic Aquafarms. I hold a Bachelor’s of Science and a Master’s of Science degree. My practical education comes from over 25 years of applied training and experience gained through working in the global aquaculture industry. I have been employed as a fish hatchery manager, a global technical manager for a major aquaculture feed supplier, and an operations manager at a fish health and aquatic diagnostics company. Last week, our entire team listened to the public comments brought in front of you. We have been impressed and challenged by the public engagement through this entire process, from the circulation of the draft EIR to the final EIR. This community’s commitment to environmental causes and the analysis of scientific information has helped the Nordic team to create a stronger, more robust final EIR. Data has been vetted, public concerns have been addressed, and all appropriate regulatory agencies have been involved in the process. Tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to address and offer clarification on a few topics that were recurring during the public comment period last Thursday. All of these concerns have been addressed within the final EIR, but given the density of information in that document, it’s understandable that people may still have questions. To start, I would like to reiterate, sorry, that the advanced technology deployed by Nordic Aquafarms in California for recirculating water technology and final effluent treatment is considered the best-in-class by the aquaculture industry and by the wastewater treatment industry. We are setting the highest standard and a new precedence in environmental stewardship for land-based fish farming, both in the United States and abroad. As we have stated in the final EIR, our product... Our production units are intentionally modular for purposes of risk reduction and scaling of the project. The entirety of the biomass on the farm is not hedged on one or two systems, but instead spread across more than 30 self-contained, independently operated, recirculating aquaculture systems, also known as RAS systems. The RAS systems clean up, correct water quality parameters, and recirculate 99% of the water needed to keep our fish healthy and thriving in their tanks. We estimate that each gallon of water is reused 100 times before we discharge it. The grow-out tanks themselves are large enough to allow the biggest of our fish to swim uniformly in school and express their national... Their natural social behaviors. Last week, we heard some concerns about estrogens being present in effluent water. There’s no estradiol or hormones of any kind are added to our feed or to our water. All of our fish hatch as females. Additionally, all fish on the farm are harvested at a time before they become reproductively mature. The integration of ultrafiltration, UV, and ozone on the farm is extremely effective in the denature and oxidation of molecules such as hormones, pheromones, and pathogens if they... If these were naturally present in the water. Further to all this, all water from the fish rearing units, the floor drains, and the processing building are sent to our wastewater treatment plant. At the wastewater treatment plant, specifically using a membrane bioreactor with a 0.04 micron ultrafilter, there is further removal of these compounds and other contaminants if they were present through the process of microbial degradation, absorption of organic matter, and removal of activated sludge. Prior to final discharge, the cleaned water again goes through UV treatment. During the past two years, our staff have participated in many open Zoom meetings with the public to answer questions and provide content related to subject matter that our guests have expressed as being important. Feed sourcing and feed ingredients has been a popular one. We have heard concerns about the use of marine ingredients like fish meal and fish oil being incorporated as a component of our feed. Fish food is not simply comprised of ground-up fish. The amount of fish oil and fish meal in salmon feed has significantly dropped over the decades. The average inclusion rate for marine-derived ingredients in salmon feed has been reduced from a level of 90% in the early 1990s to approximately 15 to 20% today. Feed formulations are constantly evolving and changing as new ingredients are deployed, and we expect this to further reduce aquaculture’s reliance on harvest fisheries. Nordic Aquafarms is committed to working with researchers and feed manufacturers to continually improve upon our feed profile to balance what is best for our planet and our fish. This, in part, includes working with feed suppliers who source fish meal and fish oil ingredients from certified fisheries that are under direct and effective fisheries management, and to also include by-product from consumption fisheries. We can provide transparency and traceability of these ingredients to our consumers because we know they care, and so do we. Also related to feed, there were some comments last week directed at the reporting of greenhouse gas emissions embedded in feed manufacturing. While SEQA does not require a lifecycle analysis of feed in the greenhouse gas emissions analysis, we feel that it is appropriate, in the context of aquaculture, to integrate this information into our company’s sustainability goals. Nordic Aquafarm will establish its corporate sustainability program specifically for California that will measure, monitor, report, and set goals for greenhouse gas emissions. We have clarified in the final EIR that Skretting, Cargill, and/or BioMar will likely be suppliers to our project. All three of these companies participate in the Aquaculture Stewardship Council Feed Standards, among other certification programs. All three of these companies utilize the Greenhouse Project guidance for reporting greenhouse emissions. All three of these companies have aggressive targets for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions at each of the facilities they operate. For example, our farm in Norway, Frederickstad Seafood, is supplied with feed from BioMar, a company that has committed to a 1/3 reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and a net zero carbon footprint by 2050. Nordic Aquafarms has decided to put our purchasing power into these companies, and their goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from feed manufacturing will be reflected in our own sustainability targets. Nordic Aquafarms has committed to voluntary water quality monitoring and reporting beyond what is required in our discharge permit. This was important to the community, but it is also important to us as we are reliant on clean water to successfully operate our business of growing premium-quality fish. The project’s NITDs permit requires us to monitor and report on a large array of parameters. Our performance and our compliance will be evaluated on a regular basis and renewed every five years, and this renewal will be contingent upon evidence that our effluent is not impacting the environment. Finally, we would like to reiterate our voluntary commitment to purchasing 100% non-carbon and/or renewable energy available to us through regional energy suppliers and local sourcing from the very beginning of operations. The farm will also construct a 4.8-megawatt, 15-acre solar array to help meet our energy needs. Thank you for this opportunity to clarify some of the questions and concerns put forth last week. In closing, we hope you found this report to be science-based, comprehensive, and a fair assessment of our project. Our entire Nordic Aquafarm staff, as well as 30 consultants, were involved in this study. Because of its complexity, there is not a single person on this team that can speak to all the content in the final EIR. So we have come together tonight with our experts, available either in person or online, to answer any further questions that the commission might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Why don’t you stay there for just a second? Is there any questions that you have for them right now? Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to double-check one of the items I believe I heard at one point, and I’m trying to find it in my notes, and I’m not. But the monitoring of the effluent going out to the ocean, status on that, what is part of that requirement, and what are you doing as Nordic Aquafarm?
Thank you for that question. We’d like to have, I think, somebody from GHD answer that one for us.
Okay.
Andrew, do you do water quality? Or let me just consult on ours.
Hi. I’m Andrea Hilton from GHD. I think what you’re asking is what Nordic’s doing in terms of baseline monitoring and above and beyond monitoring, or is that where you’re getting at?
Yes, and beyond after stages are going.
The applicant has agreed to do baseline monitoring, so before anything goes out of the pipe, they’ll be out in the receiving waters in the Pacific Ocean doing monitoring, which is not required by state law or by the Water Board at this point in time. Then they will, at Phase 1, which I think is where the confusion is, continue that monitoring, the additional monitoring, and the results will be shared transparently with stakeholders. And that monitoring will continue through Phase 2, and I believe three years post-Phase 2. So I think that’s what you’re asking.
I believe so, and it might be one of the conditions that the director was going to say again here, I believe.
Yeah. And that’s in addition to the monitoring required in the NPDES permit, or NITDs permit as sometimes I hear it called, which requires, for some parameters, daily continuous monitoring at the outfall.
Okay. Thomas, you have a question, then, Noah? I don’t... Is it for her?
No, I was just gonna point out.
Okay. Keep... Go ahead.
Just 20... Sorry. 20... Condition of approval, 21B seems to be the updated... 21B seemed to be the one where there’s confusion last meeting, and this red-line version kinda makes it clear, I think.
And that was on page...
36.
Go ahead, Noah.
Thanks. Well, and so this might actually be a question for Andrea Hilton, but I... The first part of it is really directed to the director. I appreciate very much that condition 21 regarding monitoring activities was revised based on things that were said by the CEO about starting at the point that discharging begins during Phase 1. It’s the wording of this condition that I just wanted to ask about so that I understand the duration. It says, “This is 21 Part B, begins post-discharge, receiving water monitoring shall commence at discharge from Phase 1 and continue for three years following completion of Phase 2 operations.” I think, though, what that means, but I’m asking to clarify, is that means for three years following when the Phase 2 build-out is reached. Is that correct?
Three years after Phase 2 begins to discharge, yes.
Begins to discharge, okay. So to be clear, it’ll... It won’t continue throughout the life of the project. And perhaps that would be an unreasonable ask, but this gets back to what Ms. Hilton was just saying and what Mr. King said earlier. I’m curious to know if our monitoring condition here is only going to require the water quality monitoring through three years out past the reaching the full build-out of Phase 2, I’m curious if they know what sort of monitoring there would be on an ongoing basis beyond that. Because it seems to me that while perhaps not required... While perhaps it’s not warranted to do the full level of monitoring continuously through the life of the project, that some degree of regular monitoring of water quality impacts should continue, to my mind, even after the three years following the reaching Phase 2. And I’ve heard some things about the water quality... The Water Quality Control Board permit will require that to some extent, and I guess I’m just trying to understand a little bit better if they know what will be required of that permit, or if you know.
Thank you, yes. In fact, one of the things that we’re going to address in our portion of the presentation today...
Okay.
Is the fact that it is a little bit confusing with all the different permitting agencies that are involved. And condition 21, although it’s not implicitly clear, is really a condition to the benefit of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This information is really for their use in their NPDES permit, in which case they will require monitoring. They’re gonna require monitoring if... I think the NPDES was an attachment to the last staff report. But there will be monitoring that they take at the source, which is before it goes into the pipe. Some of the concerns have been is like, okay, we get that you’re monitoring at the source, but what does that mean at the outfall? And so basically what this does is sets the baseline and then gives a good, robust set of data samples, really within the first five years of the operation of the plant. And another component that’s really important to understand is the NPDES permit is renewable on a five-year cycle. Right. So when they’re coming into the second renewal or the first renewal, they’re looking at this information with the additional sampling that’s been required by this condition to see, okay, do we have enough information? Do we need to continue to require more robust sampling? Do we have enough? Do we feel good about it? Where are we at? And it’s really important to understand that the experts that regulate that is in the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Sure. And thank you for clarifying what that five-year renewal was referring to. It’s that the NPDES permit has to be renewed every five years, so they will look at the data, see if other data is required, and so forth, every five years for that permit. Okay, thanks.
And if I could add, Commissioner Levy, I think that the concern that we were hearing from the public, it really comes down to direct effects versus indirect effects. So, you know, the direct effects are going to be measured at the source, but there may be, and, you know, so far we don’t see evidence of that, but there may be indirect effects, for example...
Right.
That happen later but are directly related to something that is being put into the bay. And so those indirect effects would need to be measured in the bay post-source.
Yeah.
So I think that that’s where the little line was drawn with some of those public comments, really under the SEQA, direct versus indirect.
Definitely. No, I think you’re right. Well, thanks for that clarification.
All right. So any other questions for Nordic before we have... Okay. Well, staff, you’re gonna give a presentation of sort.
Yeah, Mr. Turner and Mr. McNamara have some things that they would like to address.
Let’s go... Since you wanted to ask.
Through the chair, just a clarifying question about condition 21B. The way I’m reading it, it says full facility discharge in quotes, so just hypothetically, if they built out all of Phase 2, but let’s say it took them 12 months to fully discharge, that three-year timeline wouldn’t go into effect until they’re fully discharging. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct. That’s why that clarification is there.
Thank you.
All right. So any other questions for Nordic before we have... Okay. Well, staff, you’re gonna give a presentation of sort.
Yeah, Mr. Turner and Mr. McNamara have some things that they would like to address.
Let’s go... Since you wanted to ask.
Through the chair, just a clarifying question about condition 21B. The way I’m reading it, it says full facility discharge in quotes, so just hypothetically, if they built out all of Phase 2, but let’s say it took them 12 months to fully discharge, that three-year timeline wouldn’t go into effect until they’re fully discharging. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct. That’s why that clarification is there.
Thank you.
All right. Now we’ll have your guys’ presentation. Thanks, Kate.
Yeah, we just wanted a few... Clarify a few points based off of comments received. Byron?
So I’ll start with clarification to some of the jurisdictional relationships. That seems to be one of the main points with regard to the... Starting with the intake, permitting is the jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. In this case, the applicant for the intakes are the Harbor District. The Regional Water Quality Control Board is responsible for monitoring water quality associated with any new construction on the intake regarding the upgrade of the intake. CDFW is responsible for the incidental take permit as it relates to long-finned smelt. We have consulted with the Fish and Wildlife, and that has resulted in the modification of condition 6A, which details the mitigation for the incidental take permit. That National Marine Fisheries monitor intake... They monitor the intake to ensure that it meets their standards for marine species. They’re the ones that regulate the flow and the size of the screen. And the Army Corps is also regulating the pipeline through which that goes through the intertidal wetlands. With regard to ESHA on the land-based component of the project is under the purview of the Coastal Commission in compliance with the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Consultation with the Coastal Commission informed the design of the project to avoid impacts to ESHA. The outfall, as we’ve been discussing, the Coastal Commission is responsible for permitting of the infrastructure of the use of the outfall to discharge treated water. It’s the Regional Board who’s responsible for the issuance of the NPDES permit, and this permit will dictate the monitoring of the effluent. The additional monitoring that has been written into the project description was developed in conjunction with the Regional Board. The NPDES permit is required to be renewed every five years, as we discussed, and monitoring will begin prior to discharge and reported to the county annually. This additional monitoring and reporting has been developed in consultation with the Regional Board. With regard to species, California Department of Fish and Wildlife is the permitting authority for the species. The applicant must receive approval from CDFW, not only for the type of fish to be farmed, but for the license to import eggs onto the site. The impacts to the Mad River salmon are addressed in the Humboldt Water District’s Urban Water Quality Management Plan and the Associate HCP for the water that has already been allocated for this project. Again, the county has analyzed the entirety of the project components within the EIR, and the county cannot impose a regulation that is beyond their jurisdictional authority, but that’s also why we consult... The county consulted with these jurisdictions prior to publishing the EIR. SEQA encourages early consultation and collaboration with these agencies, and that has been done in this... For this project.
Comments were made related to potential impacts to groundwater water quality as a result of sea level rise on a brownfield site. This has been taken into account. As sea level rises, so does the groundwater, and the potential for hazardous materials within the soil leaching into this water then increases. As a result of the ground densification that’ll occur, extensive excavation will be conducted down to the groundwater. This will allow for all of the excavated material to be screened and tested accordingly. Requests were made that this screening of material should be done at a level of a residential standard. This is not typical for an industrial brownfield site. The Regional Water Quality Control Board determines the level at which this material is removed, and they take into account the proximity to Humboldt Bay and to the Pacific Ocean, and this is not within the purview of the county. Comments were made related to concerns for greenhouse gas emissions related to energy use and fish feed. In terms of energy use, the project has consulted with RCEA, whose goals are in align with state initiatives. By procuring 100% of renewable energy or a green power mix, the project is in line with these state initiatives. This is also vested in the project description of the Environmental Impact Report and as a condition of approval. For these reasons, this potential impact has been deemed less than significant. Additionally, there were concerns related to greenhouse gases as a result of fish feed. Nordic aspires to be certified through the Aquaculture Stewardship Council. The ASC requires that feed mills report greenhouse gases. This is not a requirement for feed purchasers. Because Nordic Aquafarms is not going to be producing their own feed within this project, that would be an analysis of a different project and therefore is not within the purview of SEQA for this project. For that reason, this is not a significant impact. Additionally, in terms of tsunami inundation, we’ve said this a few times, but the design of the structures will be able to withstand a 2,500-year event. Water level inside of these buildings would reach a maximum of five feet high. All project components will be within... Will be enclosed, which would allow for workers to be able to reach refuge elevations in a timely fashion. Additionally, there were concerns raised about the proposed refrigerants for the project. The currently proposed refrigerants are within the scope of applicable regulation, both at the state and federal level. The state of California has much more stringent regulations than the federal level. No refrigerant... No refrigerants will be used that are not allowed legally. No refrigerants will be used that are not allowed legally. And for these reasons, this is not within the purview of the county.
Is that it, Kate?
Yes, that's it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Staff? Everybody's there? Go ahead. This is your opportunity.
I didn't get covered, but I wrote down in my notes at the last, in the public testimony, that there was a lot of concern about something, parking being taken away along the coast. And I just wanted to clarify, isn't there a lot of no-parking signs along that highway?
So there are areas where parking is restricted, primarily overnight parking during the day, it's allowed. We don't envision this project affecting any of the coastal access at all.
That's, thank you.
All right. Hey, can, before we ask any more questions, can we do a little housekeeping? Peggy joined us, and so we need to, so if she wants to ask any questions, and then when the vote comes up, she needs to be brought in. So we need to do a new roll call. Trip, thank you.
Alan Bonjou?
Here.
Noah Levy?
Here.
Brian Mitchell? Mike Newman?
Present.
Melanie McCawber?
Here.
Peggy O'Neill?
Here.
Thomas Mulder?
Here.
All right. Now we have six members. Thank you, Trip. Okay, sorry to break that up. Go ahead, Director.
Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but evidently we're not broadcasting on TV right now. Not again. I am so sorry. What's that? We evidently are live on Zoom, but we are not on accessible.
Do we have to be on both, or as long as we're on?
Legally, we don't need to be on both. I just thought it would be best to try to fix it if we can.
So everybody can understand we're not transmitting, I guess, on Channel 10 or whatever the public access channel is, but you can access via Zoom. So if you want to be part of this, please go to the Zoom. Go ahead, Mike.
And can we ask Public Access to try and put a note up there to go to Zoom and to go to the phone?
So I don't know if that.
I think legally, we're probably okay. Because the staff report and the agenda include the Zoom link.
Okay. My guess is they'll probably get it up before too long, but it's just another glitch that we seem to be having a lot of lately. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay, so additional questions? Thomas, you kind of got cut off there, so go ahead.
I'm just going back to my notes. I don't even know if this would be technically ex parte or whatever. There were some comments where people were saying, hopefully, some of the commissioners and people aren't making money off of this. And I don't know where that was directed. I'm just disclosing, I do have a Class A contractor's license. I am not going to be bidding on a single bit of any of these projects. So just throwing that out there. And I do know what it's like to travel five hours to get to work on time. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Anybody else who has questions? Okay, I have a few questions. The first question I have was something that was said in the original staff report, and it was a discussion of upcoming hydroelectric projects that would feed energy to this. And it really caught my attention because unless I've heard things wrong, all I've heard about is taking dams out and getting rid of hydroelectric. I have not heard of anything anywhere that was hydroelectric. So I don't know. Do you guys know something that we don't?
I don't think we were trying to say that there was a hydroelectric project that was.
Just if that was available, that could be part of the.
That would need qualification.
But I just wanted to know if there was something that I was missing. Okay, and then I was hoping that there would be somebody here from the Harbor District, but it doesn't appear.
There is. Rob Holmwood is on the Zoom link.
Oh, excellent. I did not see that. So this will probably be a question for him. This is kind of, is going to be a strange diversion from the Nordic part of the puzzle. I'm all in for Nordic. I think it's a great project. My concern is a couple-fold. And the first one is, why would somebody, the thought that came to my mind, why would a company the size of Nordic come into Humboldt County and do a project that's $6 to $8 million and not own the ground that this project is going to be on? And I can probably guess that the Harbor District doesn't want to sell that piece of property that is part of their plan. But where I'm going with this is I want to make sure that the Harbor District, if this project is going to go there, two things. One, that the county is going to get the tax base that comes off of it. Okay, because we got to remember, the Harbor District got that property for $1. And then they got, I believe it was $2.8 million to clean that property up from the EPA. I may be wrong on that number, but it was a pretty substantial, and that's all of us paying for that. And I commend them very much for taking on this project, going out, trying to find somebody to do something there. I think it's a great project. I think the Harbor District is looking for the right kind of project. But I think that, one, we need clarification on the tax issue because if somehow, I believe the taxes will be assessed on the improvements that are done to the property. My concern is the ground that those improvements are on will not get taxed. And let's just face it, you know, you drive around town. We need the money in the county to do roads, to do all the services that we like to have, police, fire, et cetera. So I'm just being a watchdog that there's not something that the Harbor District is doing that cuts out the amount of taxes that could be there. We heard also discussion the other night, last meeting, of people concerned that if Nordic was to, for some reason, walk away from the project or... I don't know what the reason would be. To make that kind of an investment would be very difficult to walk away from. But if Nordic is not going to be the landowner, I think there should be some kind of a restriction covenant. Maybe it's a bond posted by the Harbor District, who really is the beneficiary of this, to put up that if there is something that happens, that the people of Humboldt County are covered. And I'll tell you why this comes to mind. About four years ago now, you may recall that the Harbor District approached the planning commission, I believe the supervisors too, because they wanted to take over from Pacific Gas and Electric. The channels, maybe that's not wording it right. I believe the channels were theirs, but they were going to take over the maintenance of those channels in King Salmon and I believe the main channel going over to Fields Landing. So PG&E, I paid them a large sum. I can't remember the exact number. I want to say it was 4-point-something million. It was a large amount of money. And in turn, Humboldt Bay Harbor Commission was to dredge the channels in King Salmon and maintain them. I can tell you PG&E is laughing all the way to the bank, doing backflips because they got out from underneath having to take care of what was their responsibility and dumped that on the Harbor Commission. And as far as I know, and I have friends that have kept track of it, not one ounce of dredging has been done. Now, I've heard about the dredge that was bought by the Harbor District. I've heard different stories. I don't really care about what it is, what the excuses are, why they have, why they haven't done it. What I don't want to happen is the same kind of situation happen to this site out on Redwood Terminal. I'm not saying this is going to happen. I'm not trying to be a downer. Like I said, I am all for the project. I think it is a really great project. I think that Nordic did an amazing job of how they reached out to everybody. And I'll jokingly say, the minute I knew that it was a great project was when every environmental group came out against it. Because when you have a good project, they come out against it. And when you have junk projects, they never say a word. I don't know why that is, but that's the way I see this one. I mean, it was like, wow, this thing's going to be good because everybody is coming out against it that is on the environmental side, and they're going to be regulated to the hilt. So I say that kind of jokingly, but there's some truth to it. So I'd like somebody from the Harbor District to say how the people of Humboldt County are going to be protected if something happens. I'm not saying that something is going to happen. I just am troubled by the track record of the Harbor District and following through on things. So, and I was the, as I can recall on the King Salmon one, was the only one saying, let's not do this. This is a bad move. And I'd hate to say that I told you so, but I told you so. And so I don't want to have to feel that way again. It may be a very simple thing that can be done. I don't want it to be something that keeps Nordic from going forward if my fellow commissioners agree that this is a good project. But I think it's a discussion that has to be brought up. It was brought up by the public in the first meeting. I believe it was more as to what would happen if Nordic left and how would Nordic do that. I believe the fact that they're not the landowner speaks to, it should be the Harbor District that is stepping up and indemnifying the people of Humboldt County that they will stand up if something goes wrong. So that's my thoughts.
Thought you had a question there with.
Go ahead.
The Harbor Commission. So is Rob going to answer it?
I'm hoping that Rob will. I'll look and see if he's.
Can you hear me?
Are you there, Rob?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, can. Please go ahead.
All right. Thanks. So if I could boil everything you said down, there's a lot to unpack there. It sounds like you're asking about ownership taxes and then dredging at King Salmon as a proxy for the district's ability to get things done. Does it seem like I've summarized it correctly?
Well, I just want to know how the, how if, for some unforeseen reason now, something goes wrong, how the people of Humboldt County are going to be made right on this and not be ending up footing the bill.
Well, so, ownership, there's a lot of businesses from where most businesses don't own the land that they're on. I'm not sure, honestly.
Is it possible? Excuse me.
Rob, we can barely hear you. Can you get closer?
Or a way to get on the telephone to do it? Because it's a Zoom link, maybe.
Can you pick up a phone and maybe see if that works better than using the headset? I'm sorry. It just, we can barely hear you. Or use your laptop microphone.
To be clear, we hear the volume, but it's just kind of garbled.
Muddled, yes.
Yeah, we can't make out the words.
Muddled.
Give me just a moment.
Thank you.
And Chair, while we're waiting for that, one of the things that Rob did not reiterate that I could hear, that's much better.
Much better.
Was about the county and taxes coming from there. So that's part of that as well.
Yes. So we'll give you, we may have some questions for you, but go ahead, Rob.
Can you hear me?
Yes, much better.
All right, super. All right, so I heard three questions, ownership taxes and dredging. So I'll address those, and you tell me if I'm answering your question. So ownership, I would say the vast majority of businesses don't own the land that they operate on, or at least some large proportion. So that's not uncommon. I'm not sure, honestly, if the district has ever had a conversation with Nordic about purchasing the land. But at this point, I think it would not be a fruitful conversation because of the way that the financing was structured for the EPA cleanup. It would, the EPA would be required to be paid back if the district was to sell the land. And so the cost, I think, would be out of the reach and interest of Nordic at the moment. Those conditions change in the future. But there's a certain grace period in which the district really can't sell the lands without having to pay back the EPA cleanup costs. And so that's not likely to happen. So I think it's, in all parties participating in this land agreement, it's probably well-agreed upon that this is the best arrangement currently. As far as taxes go, I could share my screen if you'd like. There's the county completed Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District Plan. And so the county has approved, the board approved, the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. And that document, I'm looking at page seven of a 22-page document that analyzes the ability of that district to generate taxes. And it looks like over the course of 20 years, it's intending on producing $350 million of property tax. So I encourage you to, if you want to look at questions about taxes and the production of taxes on that land, once Nordic begins operating, then your Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District analysis is a good document to look at. Dredging at King Salmon, not really related to the project. I understand the general analogy of that. I just started the district in January, been actively working on it. There's quite a regulatory hurdle for doing suction dredging, but we are actively working on a plan. First thing we have to do is mitigate for eelgrass, and then there's some other mitigation, but we're actively working on that. And, you know, it's both funding and permitting, so that's actively underway. Let me stop there and see if that answered your questions in any way.
Well, I think that answered most of my questions. I just wanted it to be on the record, some of the stuff that's went on, so that the public knows, so that my fellow commissioners know, you know, and if they may see something that I'm not seeing. I don't think that this is a bad project. I don't know all the ins and outs of the finance part of it, and that really isn't our purview, we're land use issues. But I do look out for the county residents, and I just, I think it's only fair that they be paying their fair share. And I'm sure that Nordic is going to pay their fair share on the improvements. My concern is mostly with the land that has already been given a lot of benefits that nobody in the real world would ever get. So, you know, the cost of the issue.
Chair Bonjou, if I could just say one more thing. Sorry to interrupt you. The audio is a little tricky here. The Humboldt County Harbor Recreation Conservation District is a countywide district. It's a special district of the state that covers the entire county, like the county that you're working for. Our interests are also of the people of the county, especially around Humboldt Bay. So our interests are aligned there. So I would say that, you know, your interest in seeing the people of Humboldt County benefit from this project and all of the Harbor District's activities is the same as our interests.
That's good to hear. I see Peggy has her hand up, so she may have something for Rob.
So it just goes a little bit on the question that you just asked. So if the improvements are made on the land, then the improvements become part of the land. So does the Harbor District then own all those improvements? And if there should be a bankruptcy and they leave the area, it could be for some other reason beyond even something going on in Humboldt County, within the Harbor District, take back possession of the land and the buildings and then look for another occupant for that facility? Is that how it works?
I'll be totally honest, I'm not entirely sure exactly how that works. And our executive director was unavailable this evening. And I'm actually currently on the East Coast with my. in, on the East Coast with my family. What I will say is that there's a complex lease structure built into our relationship with Nordic and, you know, the ultimate ownership of the buildings, you know. The district will work to make sure that the buildings are maintained and properly operated according to all of the approvals and the permits. And, you know, if Nordic was to leave, it would, you know, the, the answer to your question depends on how the lease is structured. But the, the district is committed to making sure that what happened last time, which is a company packed up and left and abandoned site, isn't going to happen again.
Well, and also, it sounds like Nordic is a good, maybe tenant, and they're doing all these benefits, but if anyone was around when the Scotiastor Mill was, I think it was a Scotiastor, well, they sold to Maxim or whatever down there in Scotia, and then you get a occupant that's not in our best interest, and then, you know, they take what they can and leave the rest for us. So, it's, maybe this is well beyond, like you said, the planning commission's purview to get involved in the business of it. Maybe that's something that supervisors or some other Harvard District, you know, is more interested in. But it just goes to where employees get left and the community gets left when a good tenant leaves and a bad tenant comes in. And I don't know what kind of guarantees or controls you have over that, but, and then the costs end up getting borne, like you said, by the local community, or, and it could be costs, or it could be losses. Lots of different things happen. So, like I said, that's, that's probably beyond, but it's a discussion that somebody should be having, and maybe you guys already had it, and somebody knows, but, you know, being open and transparent with the community, I think, is good.
Here's my, my simple but maybe unsatisfying answer to that. When no one else was able to step up and deal with the property that really needed help, the Harbor District stepped in, has done a great job so far, and will continue to do a good job.
Alright.
Can I commend you for that? I, I just feel like sometimes you can't know all the answers of what's going to happen down the road. You can't know all the people that are going to show up in the future. And so we can only just deal with some, what we can at the time. And right now, what we have is permit, issuing a permit to move forward, I guess.
Yeah.
Alright. Are there any other questions for Rob while we have him, so we can let him go and be on vacation or whatever he's doing? Go ahead, Thomas.
Through the chair, follow-up question. When I toured the site, there's obviously lots of hazardous waste there. And what I was told when I let, when we were at the site, and what I've read so far is, hypothetically, if Nordic did pack up and leave, there would be zero hazardous waste once this project is fully built out. Is that still correct, or is that incorrect?
I don't think that's a question for the Harbor District. I'm going to defer to the Director unless you want me to try.
Go ahead, Director.
Thanks, Rob. Be happy to answer that. So yes, the site will be cleaned up. Part of the proposal for, in the project description, is that phase zero that has been described pretty thoroughly in the EIR, which is to remove everything from the site and then do the pre-preparation for the buildings, which was the ground densification that Cade described earlier, which is to dig up the soil down to the level of the groundwater and then reconstruct the, the ground at a density and compaction that allows the construction of the buildings at the intensity required. And part of that will enable Nordic, as part of that work, to screen the material and then where there are soil staining, odor, other things, to have it tested and houses' materials would then be removed. Go ahead.
And thank you for that. The reason for my question is I heard some concerns from community and also fellow commissioners if Nordic did pack up and leave. And the point I wanted to hone back in on is, right now, there's hazardous waste on a site. And if the company that's looking at building out this project did pack up and leave, for whatever reason, there would be no hazardous waste left behind on the site. Thank you.
Alright, Melanie? Rob, I think that was it. I asked, so get on with whatever you're up to. Thank you for being with us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to stick with you to the end, so feel free to ask other questions if they come up.
Thank you. Melanie, you-
Oh, yeah, thank you. I'm just going to give my comments. Oh. Thank you. Yes, I have a few comments. And I just wanted to thank whoever it was who gave the presentation earlier in addressing the estradiol and some of the other components of the discussion last time. I will say that there is no perfect project, and I don't think anyone is expect, well, there are probably people expecting that. I am not. And, you know, there are different effects that we look for, so direct, indirect, and cumulative, you know, which is a collection of different effects from various sources on a single resource. And I think that there's the evidence that we don't really see too many concerns in terms of direct effects. And as far as indirects, effects go, we also don't have evidence that those are definitely going to be prevalent. And we do have a lot of groups that are analyzing those as well. And so, for, for that reason, I support the project. And one of the reasons I do support the project, in addition to what I've just said, is that, I mean, every, every project is a trade-off. And one of the ways we look at that in EIA is by looking at the no-action or no-project alternative. And if you really do a robust analysis of the no-action or no-project alternative, you really have to look at the fact that 40% of the farmed fish that we're getting right now is from China. And, you know, for the, I, we're hearing a lot about energy hypocrisy right now. This would really be the height of food hypocrisy, is one of the main consumers of farmed fish to say, no, we want to continue to get that farmed fish from China. And that would be part of the no-project assessment. For that reason, I supported the executive order in 2017 for energy independence. I mean, Saudi Arabia doesn't even have an environmental impact assessment process. You know, we at least do. Need to take responsibility for our own consumption. And the Chinese environmental impact assessment process was just put in in 2003 and has been really deteriorating. It's to the point where you can now proceed with a project without even doing an EIA. It's very fine-based, so anything that goes wrong is just a, a simple fine. And so, looking at the project from the point of view of a no-project, no-action alternative assessment, it is very clear that this project, at least in my view, is a project that we should pursue, and I am in favor of approving the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Great points. Any other questions? Comments? Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not exactly questions, although there might be questions for the other commissioners, but, but I could take a stab at it if that's, okay.
This is the time.
Yeah, so I really appreciate how we have been going about, learning about this project. And I want to say again, I think it's a good project. You know, I think I'm, I'm excited to approve this project. But as I've said, and as others have said, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we do what we can to improve it in the ways that are feasible. If we can possibly change or add any of the conditions that we have that could make it an even better project than it is and, and help come closer to achieving some of the stated goals for sustainability that Nordic has espoused, then I think, I'd like to do that. And so I wanted to throw a couple of things out there that I thought we could discuss and at least run by each other, perhaps run by staff, potentially even run it by Nordic themselves, that have come up in the conversation. And I will just take this opportunity to say, Alan, you know, we always have a good back-and-forth here about environmental groups, and we don't necessarily feel the same way about them, and that's fine. But I think it's notable, and I feel compelled to point out, that, that most of them haven't come out against this project. I know that's, there are a couple that have. I think 350 Humboldt formerly has, and Audubon Society has.
Oh, good.
But, you know, usually when, when they do come out and oppose it, you really know that, and they'll say so forcefully. And so what I've been looking at, and honestly have been finding pretty useful, is the letter that was submitted on July 27th, the day before our last hearing, signed off on by about five groups, including Epic, NEC, Humboldt Baykeeper, and CRTP. And, you know, and it's not that long of a letter, and you guys probably all saw it. They, they say collectively a number of things about how, what they do like about the project. And they don't formally say we're for it or against it, but they say a few things that they thought could be improved about the project, if we're going to approve it. And, and I have, you know, I want to kind of echo a couple of those points, and there are things that were said in public comment too, at the last meeting. One that we've discussed, that I'm feeling a lot better about now, frankly, is that we have expanded the water quality monitoring. We've expanded the duration of that, and we've clarified that that is going to be continued even after our monitoring by the Water Quality Board. So I'm, I'm satisfied that, that that is, is good, and I like the way we've changed that condition. But one question that I do have is, is there anything that we might have to say about another important condition, specifically the number 22? It's the one right after 21, which is about the water quality monitoring. Condition 22 is about the, how the applicant will meet their energy needs. And again, I really like this condition because it is requiring that they purchase renewable and/or non-carbon energy through RCEA, relying on its available portfolio, or through 100% non-carbon renewable portfolio from one of the other energy service providers in California. My comment here is that I really hope that that, that that purchase agreement doesn't end up contracting to buy biomass power. Because I think biomass power, which we have produced, we produce some of in Humboldt County, is something that's called, gets called renewable, but it's not really carbon-neutral. And I just wanted to bring up my concerns about that. Another thing that has to do with emissions, separate point though, is that transportation emissions from the trucking for this project are something that is still going to make a considerable contribution to the overall impacts of this project. And one suggestion that has been made is that potentially as a condition of approval, Nordic could adapt, could adopt a, an adaptive management plan that would require them transitioning to zero emission trucks and other vehicles as they become commercially available, rather than waiting till when that's required. So again, that's something that I think the state will require in another 12 years or something, but I thought it's something that we could at least discuss, whether we want to set a bar that's a little higher to ask Nordic to commit to that. And another point that is not really about environmental effects at all, but it's about public safety, has to do with the potential public safety issues that arise from all the trucks on, particular on Highway 255, and also, I guess, through Eureka on Highway 101. Several public commentators mentioned this in their comments last week and suggested that there are in fact a number of public safety improvements that have already been planned and are just awaiting some funding to make them happen. And they were asking us to require Nordic to contribute some amount of funding to those public safety requirements. And finally, and I know I've gone on along, so thank you for indulging me, but the one other thing I want to mention is about the fish feed emissions. This is, again, an example of where I think potentially our permit could get, could go a little bit farther than, than what it does with our conditions in meeting what Nordic's own representations are with regard to the carbon imprint of fish feed emissions. We heard a really good presentation, I think it was from Mr. King tonight, talking about how they are going to, how Nordic is going to enroll in the aquacultural sustainability, I'm forgetting what they're enrolling in, but, but the certification program that applies to their industry will require them to disclose the carbon emissions of their fish feed purchases, which I totally understand and will just defer to the experts, that that's outside the scope of SEQA. So it wasn't included in SEQA because it's happening over there. But it's nevertheless an environmental impact that I think they acknowledge they're responsible for and want to be transparent about what the emissions will be from the fish feed that they require, that they require for their business plan. So one thing that we could ask them to do conceivably is to commit to attempting to purchase the lowest carbon footprint fish feed that they can as part of their efforts to, to be sustainable and to achieve certification with regard to their fish feed. So, anyway, that's just a few thoughts that I had about ways that would be essentially helping them meet their, their stated goals of sustainability and being a good community member. In some cases, just, just trying to meet them halfway with things that they're talking about doing, or in some cases, going a little bit beyond what they've promised, but based on the things that we've been asked by the public. I thought those were points that we could consider. Thank you.
Melanie had her hand up, and then Thomas.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Levy, for that. I, I have to admit, I was really hoping you weren't going towards the forest biomass angle, but, because I will respectfully have to disagree on that one. And that is a, I mean, it's a debate, but there, there is a lot of evidence that forest biomass is considered a sustainable source of energy, and it, it really all depends on how you calculate the life of a tree, and it's a very complex equation, as you know. And also depends on the, the type of plant that you have and a lot of other factors. I will say though, that in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, what we have here in Humboldt County is an awful lot of what we call forest harvest residue. And currently, the closest place that we can take that forest harvest residue is about 400 miles away. And so anything you might possibly gain by not using it here as part of our sustainable biofuel or source of fuels is completely lost by the fact that we have to truck this stuff that's very heavy, very long distances. And so I, I can't, I, I support the use of forest biomass as a sustainable source of energy here in Humboldt County. In regards to the fish feed, I, I looked into the ASC certification. I was really happy to hear that they're willing to pursue that. I, I was going to ask that actually last time. And they do address fish feed. So that is actually part of the certification process. I, I just recently learned that myself. So I don't know if that would help, you know, with your concerns for the fish feed, or whether you wanted to go above and beyond what the ASC required in terms of their sustainability certification.
Yeah, if I can just answer that. I mean, I, I do think that we could go a little bit above and beyond what ASC requires of them, which is to disclose the carbon footprint of their fish feed. It doesn't require that they necessarily use the lowest carbon footprint source of fish feed, which is, which is an additional commitment that Nordic could make to sustainability with regard to fish feed.
Right. Okay. Well, I can definitely support the transparency of sourcing of fish feed.
Thank you. Thomas, you had your hand up. Mike?
And I'm going to go after Mike.
A couple of things. I agree with the, about the biomass being a sustainable thing in Humboldt County. And I have to respectfully disagree on trying to add any conditions above what CARB, California Air Resources Board, already uses for emissions, as far as heavy equipment, trucks on the road or anything like that, because it's my personal opinion as well as many others that when CARB was originally implemented, all the rules, that their mathematic equation was off and they had a decimal point off. So as someone that's lost lots of money, as well as family members that have lost lots of money due to these engines that were, could have been in use for equipment, I respectfully disagree to implement anything outside of CARB.
Alright. Thank you, Thomas. Mike?
Do you have?
Yes, thank you. I was just commenting to the Director about the background noise. Somebody has their microphone on, on Zoom maybe, or something like that. But anyway, so my comments on this project is, it is very well-designed. I believe that this project will seed future sustainable and economically feasible projects here in the future. here in the future. It's a good start for our peninsula, for re-enhancement and bringing business, sustainable and feasible business back to Humboldt County, to bring in good jobs, living wage jobs, things that will allow us to keep, keep our children, grandchildren here, working with good intentions and good types of projects. I also want to comment, I know the transportation report was one of the main, was master response number one, was talked about quite a bit. And I know that in the past, we've had many more trucks on that, those roads. And I do know that we did pass, and there is a enhancement for pedestrian and bicycle lanes or, or extras there as part of the sewer project that we did out near Manila. So that is coming to fruition here soon. They're out there working on it right now. I believe in the future, as things go along, that as money comes available, that more will be done there to make it easier on pedestrians, but mainly bicyclists and then traffic. I think keeping the speeds down is very important, so maybe a little bit more monitoring and citations would help all over Humboldt County for that, especially going through Eureka at different streets. Issuing traffic citations will bring the speeds down and enhance public safety tremendously. So I hope that brings that out there on, on transportation and public safety and alternative routes, pedestrian and/or bicycle. I'm all for that. I think that negative, carbon neutral is a good thing, but I don't want to bring everything down to electrical use because that electricity has to be generated from someplace, and most of the time, it's from carbon-generated plants at this point. Until we get more technology going, I, I don't believe in trying to direct us towards all-electric. I think the American way is entrepreneurship and invention. The mother of invention is to make some money, to do good, to help your family out, and go forward and bring everybody all together by doing that. Excavation of the site will go down to the groundwater level. I was happy to hear that again, and even more so forcefully out here as part of what the cleanup will be. It is not just a, a small cleanup. It will be a large cleanup and be done right. I want to emphasize that. It's very important for our county and for our citizens with that groundwater being taken care of, you know, so that those toxic wastes that have been left over there from that pulp mill are taken care of and done away with is important. So that's one of the other important things on this project. That has to be done first before then they start on making the improvements and building the buildings and getting this project going. You know, getting that done is a major, major thing, so I can't overemphasize that. And I was happy to hear about the discharge monitoring and seeing that it will be done on a regular basis. It will not be going away. And that is of course not of our purview, but the water quality, North Coast Regional Water Quality Board, and it'll be renewed every five years, so that will be monitored in the tsunami risk there. It is with the buildings there, once that is built up. It will be important for the citizens of Manila and anybody else in Samoa there, that that is available for getting to in the event of tsunamis and the warnings that are emitted there. So it's better than going up on the tallest sand dune, I believe, that we have right now as an option. So getting to a, a structure that is made to be able to be an evacuation route is important as well. I can't, you know, it's a small thing, but it is very important. And I think it helps with the inhabitants out there on the peninsula and making that available as well as the employees there. The refrigerants being used are within state and federal levels. I, I do have to comment on Melanie's point about project, if you say no, because that's taking away all the cleanup that's going on and all the other things there. And, and I think a no project is not good for our area here. All the energy and, and information and research that was done on this project, and going back to the drawing board and going the extra mile, I applaud Nordic Aqua Farms for doing that and keeping their hand on the plow to make this project here. And so I thank them for that. I will be pressing a yes, if I had a yes button, so I'll be saying yes on this project when it comes time. If there's anything else with anybody, then we can talk about it a little bit. But I think as it is with the changes that were done here between the two meetings, as well as before that, with all the public testimony, I think we have a great project here.
Thank you, Mike. I've had my hand up for a while. Not to go after you Noah, but you, you opened it up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I, I happen to agree, not necessarily with Melanie, but I agree with the biomass. We have such a problem here getting rid of our biomass. Right now, the only place that won't take it, but the only biomass place that you can take it when they will take it is, is Southern, or Humboldt Redwood, which is at Scotia. And they can't, they can't keep up with what they're producing, so they won't take anything outside. So that means it has to go to Anderson. So you can't tell me that trucking, the job to Anderson can be cheaper than, than doing other sources. I know from doing development and cleaning up, the timber that you take off won't even cover what the costs of, of getting rid of your biomass, okay? So I'd be all for it if we lived in a desert and said, okay, we don't have no biomass, but what we have is sun and sand. Let's put solar fields up, great. But we live in forests, so let's do biomass. Let's do what we have here. How about the natural gas that we have all over Lolita that could be used? And that's a good clean source. I mean, could go a lot of ways with that. We could go off on all kinds of tangents. The trucking, we're put, what they're proposing is about a tenth of what went down that road every day when we had two pulp mills going. Each one of those pulp mills, if I remember my statistics right, was getting 400 chip trucks a day. Okay? And then you had two lumber mills out there at one time, you know? To, to say that we should be regulating the number of trucks, where do we stop? How come we don't do that with every other industry? How come we don't do that with the marijuana grows? How come we don't regulate how many trucks can take fuel out there and whatever else? Pipe, fertilizer, you name it. I'm, it just doesn't make any sense. Let the market do something for a change. If you want to see something happen, let's start producing some fuel here and not buying it from every third world country that, you know, all we're doing is propping up bad regimes and produce it here. But that's a whole nother story. I'm not going to go there. But I, when you have biomass here and it's a waste product and we're trying to figure out something to do it, I, I can't see not doing it. In fact, you've got one that's trying to, to get restarted just down the road from these guys. Fairhaven Powers trying to, you know, is working towards that. How much better does it get, right there? You know, the transmission lines could go straight there. I mean, I don't know. That's maybe reaching, but anyhow, I'll stop at that.
Just real quick, I, I won't get into the back and forth with you. I, I really do respect the diversity of views we have on this commission.
I agree.
I, I see biomass a little bit differently than you guys. That's, that's fine. I just was trying to make for, trying to ensure that this would have the cleanest, the lowest carbon footprint of any sort of energy inputs that it could have. But, but generally, you know, I, I said my bit. I want to say again that to you all and to Nordic and the public, that I think this is a really great project, and I really do applaud Nordic for having gone above and beyond what was required of them in a number of different ways. I think the process of, of interacting, interfacing with the county and with environmental groups has made it an even better project in a number of important ways. I really do like the commitment that we're getting to renewable energy as part of it, and I really like that they are going to leave this site cleaner and better than they found it because of the legacy of toxic waste there. So, you know, I put it out there, I didn't really think you were gonna all go for it, that there were a couple of things I thought we could make it even better with, but if you don't agree with me, that's fine, I'll still be happy to support the project.
Thank you, Noah. Thomas?
Through the chair to staff, I guess, right here on the actions, is, are we certifying this under section 15090 or 15092 of SEQA in part A on page four?
So, we cited two different sections there. The motion would be appropriate to cite them both.
Cite them both because it said or, okay. So with that, I was going to certify the environmental impact report prepared for Nordic Aqua Farms California LLC. The project has been prepared in compliance with SEQA pursuant to section 15090 and 15092 of state SEQA guidelines and make all the required findings for approval of the coastal development permit and special permit and approve the Nordic Aqua Farms California LLC coastal development permit and special permit subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Melanie. So Thomas, and then Melanie. And before we have a, a vote on this, there's been one person's hand up, and, and I don't know if, Rafael Osorio, is he anything that has to do with Nordic? I don't know, it's just been up all night, so I'm, if it hasn't, okay, that's, that's how I feel too, but, okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Trip, rule call vote.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Melanie McCawer?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Absolutely, yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Alan Bondio?
Yes. And it's nice to see that we had a unanimous vote. That's, that's great. All right. With that, we are gonna take a five-minute break and then come back and take care of some other business. So thank you everybody for coming, if you were just here for Nordic.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so, oops. Okay. All right, welcome back everybody. We cleared the place out, so we can take care of our discussion on a, a letter to the supervisors. As you can see, I put a letter on everybody's place seat, and it's just a kind of a rewrite of the director's letter, or I'm assuming it was the director's letter, if it was Cliff or whoever, but whoever wrote it.
It was a collaborative effort.
Okay, so, just thought it, it kind of got, yes?
Did Peggy get that?
Peggy did not get that because she's not here, so I brought this tonight.
Oh, you brought, okay.
I brought it tonight.
That's why I was wondering about where this came from.
Yeah, I did not have time to, to send it to everybody, so I apologize Peggy and Brian.
Is there any way of putting it on screen then?
It is just one page, is there a way that that could happen?
Do you have it electronically at all?
I'm sure you do. It's where...
Yeah, I have it on my, no, I don't have it on my phone, it's on my computer at home.
It's, I've, I've, reading through it, it doesn't differ in substance from the letter that we were supposed to go over last meeting? And was that your question? Commissioner Newman, you were thinking it was an entirely new letter? Yeah, it's the same letter as before, it's just reworded a bit, but the content has not changed.
And it's just one page, I mean, I think it's...
Just read the letter.
We should at least read it.
I'll, you took a picture of? I, I can, but as somebody, as Commissioner O'Neil mentioned, just read it. It looks like there's a, a lot of people who are still in the queue that may want to hear about what the letter says. And, and so frankly, since this, this is one of those interesting situations that staff gets in trouble for, for bringing things to a meeting at the last minute. Is that the public hasn't had a chance to see this revision.
Okay, I, I'd have no problem, it's not gonna make a, a world of difference if we don't act on this till, till next meeting. I mean, I apologize I didn't get it out any sooner, but it's been a long week, and there's only so many hours.
So I would recommend that you read it, and, and allow the public and everybody to hear it, and then they can respond to it. You know, the basic request of the board is no different, to the board is no different.
Okay, that's true. So would you like me to go ahead and read it?
Please.
Okay, so Peggy, I'll read it to you and everybody else who's out there, if, if there's anybody who wants to comment it, we'll get to that after. So this is to the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, subject water storage requirements relevant to cannabis permitting. Dear, dear Chair Bass and members of the Board of Supervisors, the planning commission continues to review and act on a significant number of cannabis permit applications. Due to Humboldt County experiencing extreme drought conditions, there continues to be substantial public concern expressed over the use of groundwater for cannabis irrigation needs. As a planning commission, we have been addressing these concerns through careful conditioning of projects. One condition that we have recommended most consistently is rainwater catchment and storage. However, while your commission has been requiring water storage as fair, fairly as possible, we would like to improve our recommendations such that the amount of water storage requested is conditioned as a percentage rather than a case by case. As an example, not every project is pulled from the consent calendar, and as such, do not receive any additional recommended conditions regarding water storage. Additionally, the percentage of water catchment requested as a recommended condition of approval has varied with a range of approximately 20 to 50%. The minimum of 20% was selected both because it represents the minimal percentage historically recommended, and it allows for data to be collected and analyzed that would better inform a best practices recommendation regarding water catchment requirements. We are seeking your input and thoughts on our request to have the planning and building department complete permits to require water storage that represents 20% or more of projected annual water usage. Currently, whenever a cannabis operation proposes to utilize a well, the planning department has been requesting a report from a licensed geologist or hydrogeologist that demonstrates that the well is, is a groundwater well without a hydro, hydraulic connection to adjacent wells or surface water features. This requirement has helped, but the public remains concerned about the continued use of groundwater for cannabis irrigation and the overall impact of the county groundwater resources. Specifically, that there is evidence that groundwater depletion in some areas may be affecting the habitat of other organisms and the neighbors of applicants report their wells going dry despite previous hydrology, geology reports. geology reports of disconnectivity. To address these concerns, our commission has recently voted with one dissenting vote to require the following condition, that a minimum of 20 percent of the total annual irrigation needs will be collected as rainwater catchment and storage. And then this is a quote, within one year, that was from the first letter, the same quote. Within one year of project approval, the applicant shall provide a plan for review and approval by the Planning and Building Department to implement a rainwater catchment system capable of providing 20 percent of total water required for cultivation. Within two years of project approval, the rainwater catchment system must be operational and provide at least 20 percent of irrigation water. We request your board provide feedback to either modify the ordinance or to establish policy to require rainwater catchment in addition to groundwater wells. Thank you. And I didn't sign it, but that, I would. So, Thomas, go ahead.
So, as the one dissenting vote, the word changes from one letter to the other because recently, that was at the most recent planning commission. But if you looked at the last 12 months of planning commission hearings, there would, there would be different votes. So I, I, I have a problem with that part of the letter. I don't disagree that we're asking to either modify the ordinance or do a policy change or any of those kind of things. The thing I feel that we're really missing is, in the ordinance already, is the drought language, that cultivation can be curtailed. And I've really, really felt that that is the place with staff to make those decisions and not in the planning commission or policy, but staff using scientific data to figure out, hey, this is how much water storage cultivation areas need to have if they wanna continue cultivating, like, say, light depth, if they wanna do two runs or something like that. I feel that's where we go more science-based instead of policy-based. And that's where I've felt that if we give time and patience for the drought task force to do its work, that this issue will be dealt with. And I, I don't disagree that drought is an issue, and it, water storage would be nice to have. But I personally feel it should be done through the drought language in the ordinance and not through policy this way.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Mulder. I think that the part, the first thing that you mentioned, the voting, I think that that was referring to the vote that we had regarding this specific, writing a letter specifically requesting the 20 percent. It wasn't an average over, you know, all of the, the different votes that admittedly went down different ways.
I think that was three or four meetings ago when that happened, but that's what I was referring to. I, can, can I respond to? I, well, I, I know, but I usually give it, I, I just, all I want is some direction from the supervisors, so we're not waffling on, should we or shouldn't we? I think that, you know, next year, we could have a, a non-drought year and have lots of rain and, and this discussion will, will go away. But it just takes up so much of our meetings. We just have the same discussion over and over and over. And I'm, to what you were just saying that you think staff should, should be able to regulate, regulate this, I'm worried that we already burden staff too much. They got, and, and I think we've been, the record shows that we've been permitting way more than we've turned down. I would say it's probably one to 25 that get approved to everyone that gets, I may be a little bit high on that number, but we approve a lot. I'm just, I just want some clarity so, from the supervisors, because it's not our place to change things, it's their place to change things. They call, say, nope, just like they did the last time we asked for some clarification. They said, nope, trains left the station, keep it on track, keep doing what you're doing. That's fine. Yeah, but what they were really saying was just keep the status quo going unless you real, there's something really jumping out at you. I mean, that was my interpretation. Maybe I misinterpreted, but I think the bottom line is, is they just want, keep processing them as, as fast and as many as we can do. And I can see from their standpoint why they would want that when there's a backlog and, you know. I'm, I'm just saying, I think it would make our lives a lot easier, it certainly would make staff's life easier, you know, if we had clear direction. That's all I'm trying to go. So, Thomas, then Noah, then Mike.
Just a quick response to that. I don't disagree that it takes a lot of time and it'd be nice. And I come from a different viewpoint as far as the ordinance is the ordinance. And then we've kinda had some policy change. And there's, there's actually been some valid findings for some of the different conditions I've seen on projects. As, it would be nice if maybe we tied in the drought language in the ordinance as maybe then the last paragraph, if you added something. Or do we rely on the drought language in the ordinance, which is staff? It's not just the Planning Department, I believe, DH, DH, Sheriff's Department, and like a couple other people or heads are on that as well. It would, I would just like to see us tie into that drought language, and that's it.
Just a point of order. Were we going to go to the public before we kept going on this? After you read the letter, I thought we were gonna go to public maybe and then come back through.
If that's what you'd like to do. I figured we'd have some discussion and then open it up to the public and then we'd have-
And that's all I was trying to double-check, see where we were doing that. Okay, thank you.
How about Noah, and then we'll go to public.
Okay, sure, yeah. One thing I just wanted to say is-
I have my hand up for a long time, so I'd like to ask-
Okay, I will let you go after Noah. I'm sorry, Peggy, I didn't see it there. You're right, you did. Thank you.
Sorry, Peggy, I couldn't see your hand because I don't, anyway, we'll, we'll get you in after me. Just wanted to say, first of all, I, I appreciate that this letter, unlike our attempt a couple of years ago to ask for guidance from the board, this one actually gives a, gives a more specific idea of what we would like to do. And I think that the last time, we were more just listing, these are the issues and we're seeking guidance from you on these issues, because we keep having different outcomes on those issues. And maybe that formulation of the question was too general for them, but they, they didn't give us any help. So at least this time, we're trying to take it in a more specific proposal. I, I would really like, if possible, to incorporate any changes that Thomas might suggest about tying it into the drought language of the ordinance. I think if, if this could be something that we could agree on unanimously, that would be good. And I'm, I, I respect where he's coming from on making that suggestion. And then finally, just a couple little points that I wanted to point out, might be a typo, not totally sure. But in the second full paragraph, second line, which begins, however, while your commission has been requiring, that should be our commission, right? That's-
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm speaking to the supervisors. Your commission-
Oh, I, okay. Then I thought you were talking about what we've been doing as a commission rather than them as a board. So maybe we wanna say-
It could be our-
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, because I thought what you were saying in that sentence is, what, we as a commission have been requiring water storage as fairly as possible, but we would like to improve our recommendations. You see what I mean?
Fine.
So, it made more sense to me for it to be our commission.
That's why- If I could, they're not recommendations. You, you actually approve things. You require things. So they'd be requirements.
Okay, that's, that's one condition that we have required most consistently in the-
Just trying not to be too forceful. I just want them to consider it. It seemed like they, I got out of the first round that they just seemed kinda burdened that we sent them anything. Okay? And I, I'm- Yeah, I just wasn't that close, sorry. I just wanted it to, to be, for, for them to maybe not, it be so brash. I don't know. I don't know what exactly I was trying, I just, I'll tell, why I rewrote it was only because the first one said that, that some of the commissioners didn't agree with doing this. Well, there was, I think that there was pretty much agreement amongst all the commissioners except for Thomas, that, that there, that there was room for discussion. And I think that even Thomas would, would have room for discussion if we, we go to the supervisors, write about it, and they make the decision. You know, it's not, this isn't our place to make a decision whether we do this, but it is our place to, whether we're requiring it every time. And I'd rather have their blessing that we're requiring the, than every time doing it. And then, well, that turns out is the, the people then go and, and request to go before the supervisors. And pretty much all the time, it goes in their favor. So it's just a, it's a, a waste of everybody's time. Whereas if we had this-
And this one, I appreciate that it's very specific, whereas, you know, when we were talking about the, I think it was solar generators and other things last time.
Right.
It was, it wasn't specific enough. And so it was easy for them to just sort of, you know, pass, move on to the next item.
I think we, we, we let it, we let it be easy for them to take a pass on it because we didn't have a really specific ask.
And the first version definitely, I think it would have been a lot easier for them to just pass it through like the last time. Okay, yeah, just keep doing what you're doing. And we don't really have anything to say here. So I really appreciate that it's more specific. And I think the second sentence is a good place to add what Commissioner Mulder and others are suggesting, due to Humboldt County experiencing extreme drought conditions, and then add a little bit on, you know, the other supporting departments and other.
Yeah.
That's fine by me.
I'll let Peggy go in.
Yeah, Peggy's, Peggy's been patient. So go ahead, Peggy.
So I've been hearing about this drought task force now for over a year, because I think I brought something up earlier about that. And I, we keep waiting for them, and I'm not sure how long we, we're gonna wait or what, you know, if there's a timeline for them to come up with any kind of recommendation. I do think that there needs to be some sort of recourse. Like you could say 20 percent, and you're just, you know, that's just a number. It's not based on maybe science. But it could be that it needs to be more than 20 percent in certain areas, certain watersheds. And also, there needs to be some sort of recourse. If you're, if you're using water for domestic use and all of a sudden your water goes away because you're right next to a, in a drought, next to a cannabis farm or any kind of farm. And I think I've asked this before, I don't think there's any recourse. Once you permit them, then they're permitted. And then if everyone around them loses their water during a drought, what's their recourse other than, oh, well, they can sue them? I think that's what I was told before. So I think that, you know, I don't know where the 20 percent came from. And we're talking only about wells, aren't we?
Yes.
Because we have 100 percent if you don't have a well. So, about wells. And, you know, maybe 20 percent is the baseline, but it's possible that it could be more if your impact is greater, because it's different in different areas. I can tell you that. I ran seven water systems, and some would be full of water and some aren't, you know. And so you can't just say across the board that it's gonna be even. And there could be areas where it's gonna be much more extreme and much more impactful to the neighbors. They're, they're already running out of water in July maybe, and then now all of a sudden, it's even sooner than that. So I think it's good to have a recommendation. I mean, it'd be nice, you know, if it's in the ordinance or not in the ordinance, there should be some, some declaration that this is required because of the current conditions. And like you said, it could change next year. So maybe it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, maybe it needs to be an emergency type of declaration. I, I don't know the legalities of what it needs to be, but I certainly can sympathize with people that need domestic water and they don't have it, whether they're around cannabis or not. So I think we need to protect them.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. Just a thought, it doesn't have to be 20 percent. I mean, that, that's just what it seemed like, something that we've talked about before. So that was why that number come out. But maybe on certain projects, we say we even need more just because of where it's at and what we're hearing from the neighbors, you know, that there's compromised wells, and they don't, they don't have the water they need. I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that we've been going about it pretty blind. And it's just like the electricity, saying you have to within, you know, by this date, you know?
Well, I do remember that Commissioner Newman did feel a lot more comfortable asking for what we typically have been requiring as a minimum of, you know, in terms of water storage. I think we had that discussion where, you know, we, maybe our minimum would be higher. And the 20 percent achieved almost a full, you know, consensus. So I think that's mostly the reason why we went with the 20 percent. And then, you know, that, that also does allow, as you point out, the time to collect the data in order to determine, you know, where the zones might be, where more might be required, or maybe the percentage needs to be higher, or maybe it needs to be lower. I mean, we just don't have enough data to, I mean, as a planning commission to come up with the exact percentage yet.
Go ahead. Yeah, so let's move on to, let's get some public input and then we'll come back and further the discussion. So, right now, the first caller is public 7108. There's no hands. Oh, there we, the first one is 7429 with a hand up. So put your hand up if you wish to speak. Star, there we go.
Hi, good evening. I, I really appreciate that your commission is discussing water storage. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. This is Robi Tenorio. Well, I think we're all realizing that overall water, the water situation has changed, and we're not guaranteed full recharge in these drier and hotter years. And at the same time, there's been an increase in water use. So, storage is a solution. Big ponds could, could also serve for storage and as a fire suppression tool. And the grant program that Director Ford just announced was really great news. It's good to hear about support for cultivators who need to develop storage and renewable energy. And I encourage your commission to encourage pond development assistance with maybe how a smoother permitting process and less expensive process. And if you encourage ponds, you could then very much expect much greater storage than 20 percent, which is, which is too low. This, this is a, is a really site-specific issue on, on the amount. And just a little bit of a comment that waiting for the drought task force to give feedback or direction, I think that leaves the cultivators in the lurch. And, and they could get a big bad surprise when they are not prepared. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Margot Advisors, Mark Rowe. Says Mark.
Thank you, commissioners. I'd like to speak on behalf of the dozens of 1.0 applicants with wells that are currently stuck with interim permits. These new policies are hindering farmers who have been waiting six years for approval. By enforcing unwritten, unwritten policies which are not in the ordinance, specifically requiring hydrological assessments that were not required of hundreds of applicants in the past, you're creating an unfair and inequitable review process. These projects, which were pre-existing, were, they were not allowed to expand beyond their cultivation size prior to 2016. And honestly, many of these have in fact been reduced during the permitting process. They cannot constitute a significant impact under SEQA based on the baseline established by the Environmental Impact Report written after they were in operation. What I find most ironic is that these delays are continuing to make the situation worse. By preventing approval of these land use permits, these farmers cannot obtain building permits. And without building permits, it has been difficult for the county to issue business licenses. Without a business license, you can't get a grant to get the additional water storage you need to be less dependent on your wealth. On behalf of all 1.0 applicants who are stuck in this holding pattern, we request that you drop the hydrological assessment policy and any new water requirements for pre-existing farms. These folks have been legally operating for the past six years. They need final approval to be given access to these new resources that are being made available to improve their environmental impact. Honestly, incentives can have the greatest influence for change. These farmers need your support, not increasing restrictions and additional requirements. And please keep in mind that these are homestead farmers who are also dependent on their wells for domestic water use. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 7108.
Good evening. This is Bonnie Blackberry. I just wanna say, I totally sympathize with these existing, or pre-existing growths that have been in the works for six years. The problem is, is that things have changed a lot in the last six years. We are now in a historic drought. The county has a drought emergency. Things are really, really different. And having this dependence on wells with no- And having this dependence on wells with no storage required, uh, that's part of the problem. So, um, yeah. And with these grants that Director Ford mentioned, uh, money available to help these people get water storage. But we have to deal with the current situation and it's historic drought is very, very serious. And climate change makes the probability of having a bunch of rain come and save the day, uh, isn't likely. So I support Chairman Bonziel's, uh, letter that he wrote. I think it explains more clearly. So, thank you.
Thank you Bonnie. Um, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. And Peggy, just a question for you. You, your hand is still up and I, I never saw it go down and then come back up. So I just wanted to make sure that you just left it up. So I'm not ignoring you. All right. She took it down. All right. So Mike, go ahead and then Thomas.
So I, I didn't ask a lot of questions. It was mainly about procedures and stuff. So Margot Advisors brought up another point that I was thinking in the back of my mind, you know, about, um, permitting and the 1.0 in the queue that has already gone and then the ones to come. What are the particular grant requirements for this improvement for, um, water help? I haven't heard much about that. So I'd like to ask the director to, uh, comment about that and maybe something can be done there, but maybe nothing can. But I'd like to hear more about what the requirements are for that in order to help, uh, these small farmers. If there's a requirement for size as well as then, uh, for where you're at in the process. Uh, number two, um, I know that we are in a precedent of drought time, um, but as I've said before as well, um, about changing rules midstream, I don't like it, um, because everybody has got their business plans set upon those. I understand, uh, if rain catchment, um, is going to be required or, that's why I was, we were talking about recommendations instead of, um, requirements. But it evolved over to requirements because of the pressure from a lot of outside, but we've still got the 1.0 permittees coming up, um, that have set their business plans and been trying to, uh, get things done, uh, in order to be fully permitted. And I, I'm torn between, um, trying to, um, bring up the drought situation and having extra requirements. Uh, maybe there's some sort of compromise in there that we can come to, with that. But I'm interested in hearing some of these requirements for, um, help, uh, monetary help for, uh, water help. Is that what I had heard, Director?
Yes. And if I could, I'd like to also address your, your most recent comment too about changing the rules. Cause one of the projects that you, the commission imposed that condition on, um, in 2016, when they came in with their application, at that time, they were told that you should drill a well because we don't want you to divert surface water. So they drilled a well. Then they worked for four years to get to a place where they could get to a, a permit approval. Then there was a requirement for a geologic report. And so they went and got a geologic report before they could come to hearing. And then they got to hearing with the well and the geo, geologic report, everything they've been told to do. And then they were told, no, that's not good enough. You've got to also have 20% of rainwater catchment. And I think when Margot Advisors mentioned, you know, continually changing the nature of the game, that's a classic example of what happens. Here's somebody that's been working at this for five years and every time they get that close to having an approval, the rules change. That being said, back to your first question, is that, uh, the county of Humboldt was fortunate enough to, uh, receive a grant from the Department of Cannabis Control for a total of $18 million. And that, uh, grant was in the state's original inclination of it was to help move cultivators from, um, provisional licensing to annual licensing. And so one of the things they were doing was giving money. Many counties are using that to buy computers, hire staff, gear up to basically process permits. We met with DCC and told them, hey, we've done that. And they know that. We're, we're, we're way ahead of the rest of the state. I don't want to brag, but we are. And they said, okay, you don't have to use it for that. You can use it for environmental compliance. And so we put in the grant to, to enable people to obtain money to put in water storage and to, um, put in alternative forms of renewable energy. And then we set aside $3 million to do, uh, studies of the county to try to develop regulations for well permitting and to understand, uh, to basically just develop regulations that would address, um, some of the concerns that we've been struggling with. So I think today, um, at four o'clock, we hit send on, uh, notices to all cultivators, um, letting them know that this is available. And what this does, it makes $60,000 available per parcel for cultivators to put in rainwater or put in water storage. And that, that can be, um, either, um, tanks, it can be a pond. Um, there's not a limitation on what that water storage looks like. It also gives them the ability to apply, and they can apply for both, to get $30,000 to initiate work on alternative forms of energy. And so we anticipate this going live, uh, starting to take the applications. We've got a, a website set up to do this. We're doing it online to start taking applications, um, on August 22nd. That's a critical date for people to make sure that they're aware of that August 22nd date, that they can go online. Um, the application is extremely simple, as simple as we can make it. And I know for government, that sounds like an oxymoron, but we tried. Um, and, and then, um, this, later this year, I think by November, we will, uh, take it to the Board of Supervisors to allocate that money. The DCC has not given us all 18 million yet. We basically got slightly under 10 million to allocate right now.
So are there requirements on the permittees to be at a certain stage or anything like that? Or could they be in interim stage if they have not?
They, they can be an inter, interim permit holder. They can be, uh, they can be approved. Um, and, and so, yeah, no, there's not those limitations.
So even those ones that have already gotten permits are able to apply for this money for?
Yes, particularly if they're under what we call a provisional permit where maybe they had requirements to replace some of their water storage with other water storage. Um, they, they can, uh, use this money to do that.
Is there a size restriction?
No.
So it's just anybody that is applying for license or has had a license?
Anybody that's an interim permit holder or a permit holder is eligible for the license or for the grant. Sorry.
Great. Thank you.
Just real quick question. Just, just, I just didn't hear you say, how much did you say is available per parcel for water storage?
$60,000.
60. Okay. And another 30,000 available to develop alternative energy?
Yes.
Great.
And I also want to clarify one thing. When we originally submitted this to the, uh, DCC, there was a matching, uh, component to it. And we took away the matching component. So it's a, it's a pure grant at this point.
It's a big step forward. Thanks for getting that done.
Yeah.
Thank you. Melanie had a question and then I'm sorry, Thomas.
Thank you. Yeah, the director covered a lot of that and I'm.
I didn't know.
Yeah, really excited about that opportunity. And it's more just to address what Commissioner Newman was talking, but in terms of compromise, I, you know, I think that is what we struggled with last time. We wanted to put 50% just simply because, you know, the environment, quite frankly, doesn't care that we just happen to have so many applicants that it's taken so long and cost a lot of people too much time and money. Uh, you know, the environmental setting has changed and, you know, it is our responsibility to address it. And, you know, we, we went back and forth. I think most of us at 1.1 at 50% and then we decided the 20% would be actually the compromise position. And 20% isn't asking, I don't think, in, you know, a lot in terms of water storage or water catchment, uh, especially if, you know, they can compete for one of these grants, of course.
Thomas, go ahead.
Couple of different things here. The grants are awesome, but there is one negative caveat to it. Those that have already put in water storage are ineligible for it. So many people I know have significant investments in water storage and, uh, that was great for the environment. But it leaves more money out there for other people. Um, I really, to go back to this letter, I really have a problem with the requirement of rain catchment versus just water storage in general because I think, um, the geographical logistics in some areas make it not feasible to do rainwater catchment. Um, I think that's just something, if you're, if you are going to look into a letter of saying you want X amount of percent of water storage, I, I would caution to stay away from, um, rain catchment as an only option. I couldn't even support a letter going forward to the Board of Supervisors if it just was only rain catchment. I, I still go back to the ordinance, but, um, the rain catchment requirement is a hard one. Um, I heard a comment, um, public comment about wanting pond development, but then if that was something the commission was gonna push forward with, does that mean that they're suppo, supporting the county and Cal Fire and the commission would support more conversion of timberlands? Because I don't think many owners of timber parcels I know myself, I wouldn't want to give up my conversion area that could be potentially used as residential for putting in another pond or something like that. If it's for environmental benefit, that probably would do. So just something to think about. And Margot Advisors really brought up a point for me is unfair and inequitable review process and baseline existing. And it, I mean, for me, I'm concerned that there may be a really fair argument, um, for 1.0 applicants that are pre-existing versus new to have like some sort of a class action suit against the county. Maybe I'm wrong, but, um, if you look at it from, I know myself personally, I was someone that had projects come before the commission, before all these new things have come about. I know some people that were in the middle. I mean, I've, I've seen some places with very large generators with no curtailment in sight ever, um, other than the state, um, emissions rules. And then now I see, you know, then I've seen at the commission where there's projects that basically they're curtailment on like an EU 3000 generator and their full sun light depth. So I'm, I'm really torn. Uh, Margot Advisors' comment really, really tore me on the unfair and inequitable review process. And then the director's story, not story, but just letting us know about an applicant's struggles. And I've talked to many of those people that struggle. So I'm leaning towards leave the ordinance where it is.
I'd like to comment. Um, statement that it's unfair, it may be unfair that things change, but things change all the time. I mean, is it fair that now each one of my customers has to pay an extra 15 to 20,000 on a house because I was mandated by the state to put solar on the house? I'm not against solar, don't get me wrong. But it was, it wasn't a carrot to get people to do solar. It was a hammer that was put on developers and builders because they knew they could force it on them. Okay? You know, before that, it was sprinkler systems. It was SRA from the, the fire captains because, you know, that came from the state fire because they don't manage their lands. Okay? And then they blame it on, on development. And some development shouldn't go out in those areas. But all those things is, all I'm, the point I'm making is change happens all the time. And I don't see anybody giving out handouts to any of the other industries that are just struggling, you know? I bet if you ask the truckers, they'd love to, to get a handout for $60,000 to, to be able to afford to bring all the things that we need down the road. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna buy that, that the pot growers should be any different. I'm, I'm not anti-pot. I'm just, why do we always give more and more to this industry and the rest of the industries just get thrown to the wolves to, by the wayside? You know? It's troubling. Yeah, go ahead.
I agree that rules change all the time. But, um, one thing I've noticed in all the buildings I've permitted in this county and, uh, there's, I think another in a different county as well. Um, yours, when you submit your application, as long as you stay up with your inspections, you're held to that standard. So if you submit applications, especially for like energy standards, you're held to that standard at time of submittal. And that's kind of where I'm basing my comments back to.
That's a fair, that's a fair statement, but things change all the time. They get added on and that, but that is a fair statement. Usually that's the way I've, I've seen it happen too. So I, that's.
I, I think the reason for that is that we don't have a backup of, unfortunately, of, of builders who've got like homes by plane that we, you know, we have years of backup on like we do with cannabis permitting. I mean, it's, it is definitely, you know, different in that regard. And, um, you know, again, I would just say that, you know, I don't, I don't personally think asking for 20% rainwater catchment under this newly changed drought condition is that extreme. Um, yeah.
Let me ask, Thomas, is there a way you could get, is there some way that we could present it to the, the supervisors that would work for you? Because I think it's all about coming up with compromises. Is the num, is 20 the number? Is that what you're having trouble with or anything?
I'm, can I respond?
Yes, please.
I'm assuming, okay. Um, so, so where my hesitations come from is we went through thousands of hours of developing ordinances. And when we developed ordinance 2.0, we left ordinance 1.0 alone except for the sphere of influences because those were the unintended consequences or unintended, I can't think of the exact terminology. Um, so with that being said, I don't honestly agree with everything, but it went through the process. So I don't, if, if something was gonna be changed, I feel it either needs to be a new process to open it back up for new cultivation or new projects submitted. But I go back to, these were the rules in place when all these applicants submitted it. So they've been working towards passing, getting through all the rules. And then I do know that there is in the language about the drought and something about drought language that our cultivation area can't be curtailed due to drought. We're in a drought emergency. I think there's a report to the Board of Supervisors every month. That, from my perspective, and maybe I'm wrong, is coming from more of a science-based approach rather than, um, everyone across the board has to have X amount of water storage. And I, I personally feel that's the way we're gonna get to meeting all of these needs. Um, and I just, I don't know. I just, I'm very, very much in, in line with like, hey, the rules. Do I think water storage is great? Do I think it'd be great to have, you know, people have water storage, you know, basically enough not to have to pump for September, October, um, maybe August? Yeah, that would probably be great. But, um, it's not in the rules. And that's, if we ask, hey, this is a condition that we've been putting on some projects and, uh, do we want to open up the ordinance to look at this? Do we want to follow through with, um, the drought language in, or, I don't know. It's, it's a fair question. And I'm one of seven. So I'm like, I haven't even done the percentage, but I'm not very high in the vote count. So I mean, it's, it's easy to go, you know, there's one, two, three, four, five, six today. So it's easy to go five to one, four to two. I don't know.
Thank you, Thomas. Noah?
Okay, well, first of all, I, I really hear where you're coming from. Um, I'm not, uh, I have mixed feelings as well. have mixed feelings as well about putting a new requirement in place that changes what was required at the outset of the application process. I guess the thing I want to point out, first of all, is just that what, what it, what it feels like it could do if we do something along these lines is give a level of certainty that hasn't been there for many applicants who've come forward. Because as you know, and as you have definitely been concerned about sometimes, we're hitting, we're adding this requirement somewhat randomly. Or not randomly, but, but it's hard to predict and it is certainly inconsistent and it doesn't apply across the board. And so, I mean, but that's what we've been doing. And so, I think we need to take that into account as, you know, what we're trying to rectify is a somewhat uneven use of that, of that tactic on our part. But secondly, I'm wondering if there's some way that we could craft this, this idea, to make it less about a mandate and more about an incentive. So, in other words, something that could put it out there that could say, if, if you applicants who are still in the pipeline and still about to come before us, agree to this extra condition of putting in up to, you know, at least 20% rainwater catchment, then, then we'll, then, then we'll give you an advantage or we'll help you out in some way. And then at least there's an element of choice, right? Then it, then it's not necessarily requiring it to everyone. It's, it's saying, we want to give an advantage to those applicants that are able to do this and willing to do this. But if you can't, if it doesn't pencil out for you, if that's too big of a burden for you to change your plans and do that additional rainwater catchment, then, then we won't require it, but you don't get that advantage. I, I don't know how we would do that exactly, but I'm just at least floating the idea that we could try to make it more incentive-based than a requirement.
Good idea. Mike?
Yes, Noah, thank you. I like that idea as well. And incentive-based from the baseline that has been there. My question is to the director regarding what Thomas has said in the ordinance about drought conditions. And I'd like to hear what the ordinance does say about that.
So, since we primarily through the chair have been talking about 1.0, I'm going to read from 1.0. This is in, this is subsection M of 55.4.10, which is application requirements for all CMM, LUL clearance. This is, or permits. And it says that acknowledge that the county reserves the right to reduce the size of the area allowed for cultivation under any clearance or permit issued in accordance with this section in the event that environmental conditions such as a sustained drought or low flows in the watershed will not support diversions for irrigation.
And is that, where does that come up or, or when is that triggered exactly in there?
So, that would be triggered in a situation whereby if, this is one of the things the drought task force has been looking at and monitoring, is are there wells that are going dry? And we recognize that there's a disincentive to report a dry well, so we're not seeing a lot of wells being reported as being dry. But in situations where there are extremely low flows or no flows within creek streams and rivers, in situations where we were looking at it as being a potential this year, but frankly, the late rains in June kind of gave us a little bit of breathing room for, for the year. But if we were going to head into another very dry year with, without those late rains, we may have been in a different situation and declared that there was a need to curtail cultivation. And curtailment of cultivation can happen in many forms. It doesn't necessarily mean you can't cultivate at all. Because people who have rainwater storage, and this gets to the incentive that was being discussed, if you have water, you don't need to curtail because you stored your water. And, and so, that's one of the things about the grant program that becomes really, really important, is that's an incentive for people to recognize that if I've got water storage, I'm not as effective, I'm, I, I'm not as affected by drought. I'm, I'm more resilient. It also could be late season cultivation whereby at the end of the year, there's often a lot less water in, in, on the surface, perhaps even in wells. And, and so that may be a time, a need to, to curtail. And, and so, it is very open-ended, but it's open-ended with a purpose to allow a analysis and evaluation of the circumstances. It could be as specific as a watershed. It could be the entire county.
So, this drought task force, do we have any idea of where they're at, when that's going to end, and come forth with recommendations? Then, I know, as we've heard with everyone here, pretty much, that we've been asking for this and, and seeing where it's at. Is there any more concrete idea about when they may come forth here on their recommendations?
So, there is a report from the drought task force coming forward on August 30th at the Board of Supervisors. We are, there's kind of a subcommittee of the drought task force that's working on developing an approach to wells. And we're looking at bringing that approach forward to the Board of Supervisors on September 20th.
I'd like to comment. I had my hand up, so. So, I, maybe you can give me some clarification, but I believe as a planning commissioner, that part of our job is to evaluate the situation as it changes. And so, when we see changes due to drought, due to whatever, I, I think that it, it is our job not only to address that issue, but bring it up to our supervisors who are our bosses, in essence. So, I think we would be not doing our job if we just looked the other way and don't question things that are going on with water. I mean, let's not, you can't tell me that we don't have some say in what happens. Ask any, any of the almond growers or the rice growers or the alfalfa farmers up in Alturas that have all had their water allotments curtailed and are not going to be able to grow for who knows how long. Okay? And they had rights, they had rights that were, were given to them for that water. And the state came in and said, your rights are gone now for the betterment of whatever. I don't, I'm, you know, there, some of them are getting paid to not grow, some of them aren't. But there's a lot of people that are hurting. And to say that, just because in some ordinance that was done in 2016, when we weren't in a drought, or at least not in the kind of drought that we are now, you know, that, oh, because we said that you get water this way means we, we got to stay that. We can't change. Nothing can change. And I, I just, I don't buy that. I don't buy that argument.
Well, could I, could I offer a thought? Because one of the things I hear from the commission is that there's agreement on the need for the discussion by the board. And, and, but there's disagreement on what that, the focus of that discussion is. And, and so, maybe the letter really needs to start at the most general, which is, we believe the board really needs to tackle this issue of water availability, drought, climate change relative to cannabis. I mean, that doesn't, that's not giving direction either way. That's just saying, we see this as being a problem. We collectively see it as being a problem. It affects how we make decisions on applications. And so, we're looking for your specific guidance on that. Then subsequently, you could probably prioritize the things that you would agree would be recommendations. One of the things I hear from the board or from the planning commission tonight is that there's agreement on water storage. I think you would all agree that water storage is necessary. At least that's what I'm hearing. No, I think Thomas offered that as a compromise.
Can I make a brief, yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the, through the chair, is, if we had water storage was where I'm seeing, if we wrote the letter about water storage versus the requirement of rain catchment, because logistics rain catchment, it sometimes doesn't work. Geographics, it doesn't work sometimes. And most importantly, it just doesn't work for a lot of applicants. So, if someone was able to pump from a groundwater well in the middle of winter and store that water in the middle of winter and then use that water, say like August, September, October, when there isn't as much water out there, I would be in support of asking that question to the Board of Supervisors and asking at the end here, will we request the board provide feedback to either modify the ordinance or to establish policy to require water storage in addition to groundwater wells? Or do we leave the ordinance as it is and rely on the language about the draft or the drought section that the director read out?
I certainly don't believe there's only one solution to this. And if that's a, a better way, if everybody agrees, I'd like, I, I, I hope that we could send something unanimous to the supervisors to show that we really are concerned with this issue. Hopefully, we're going to get to where we're not in a drought anymore and this is going to be a moot point. But who knows when that's going to be? So, I just think something needs to happen. I mean.
I, I'd like to say something. I'm often the only one that votes against it. And I have to live with that, you know? So, I don't think, you know, we could have, it's possible we're not going to have unanimous agreement on this. But if we have the majority, then that, that's the way it goes. Because that's the way it goes every time I don't agree with something. No one tries to appease me and, you know, change everything so that Peggy wants it. So, you know, I think you said it correctly. What was in place when the ordinance was passed is not what the conditions are now. It may not be the conditions next year. We might just start raining and flooding like they are in the Midwest and, and the drought won't apply. So, if we have a consensus, fine. If we don't, we go by a majority opinion. And I think we move on.
Go ahead, Thomas.
I agree with Peggy 100%. I have no problem with the commission putting a motion on the table, approving the letter that the chair provided and taking a vote on it. I have no problem with that. So, I agree with you, Peggy.
Well, on that note, I will make that motion.
All right. Before you make that motion, can I, is there something that you could, you could add to that letter that would make you be in agreement? I mean, is there, if we worded it that it, rain catchment or other types of storage during the off-season, during the winter season or the, no?
I, I think that we could get there. The problem is that it's not just about the, the rainwater. I mean, the, the public comments, I would say, are possibly over 50% regarding the potential connectivity of their well with other people's wells. And so, yes, the wat, I agree that the water storage is important and it addresses a lot of the issues that we're talking about. Because ultimately, the water falls and if you take it in the winter and store it, you're, you're coming out ahead. But there are also a lot of public comments coming in, in regards to the potential connectivity and some evidence that maybe wells we thought weren't connected are, you know, to either waterways or to other wells. And, and so, for that reason, I'm hesitant to say only water storage. I think we were very specific that we wanted to have, and that's why we have such a low number, to be honest. We went with the lower, was we were talking about 50%, you know? And then we were like, well, is it water storage? Is it totally rainwater catchment? And so, in the end, it was the 20% because we realized we're only really referring to rainwater catchment. So, I see them as quite different. And for that reason, I, I would be hesitant to just phrase it as water storage because I know that we would still get all those same public comments regarding the wells that we do now. Yeah.
Go ahead, Thomas.
Just a brief response. I, I respect that opinion and idea. I also look at water storage as like, if that water's taken in the winter months, it goes, it goes in line with forbearance and all those other things. So, that would be my comment back. I have heard in some areas, though, that it takes a season for wells to recharge in dry areas. So, I do understand it. I mean, and, and like I said, I have no problem with you guys making a motion and acting on it the way it is. I can't support it the way it is, but that's totally fine. That's why we have diversity and we had a really respectful conversation here tonight. So, I'm good with that.
Okay. Well, Melanie, you wanted to make a motion. Let's see where that goes.
Sure, we'll give it a shot. So, I'll motion to the, to approve, to send this letter with a few edits to the Board of Supervisors. And I believe the director has the edits in question, but just to be sure, I'll go over a few of them, at least the ones that I have. And then maybe we can have a discussion about them. The first one would be, you know, notwithstanding Commissioner Mulder's unwillingness to support the letter, I thought he had some very good suggestions. And so, I think we were going to add some reference to the Humboldt County Drought Task Force, as well as perhaps some of the other departments that are following some.
I, I would submit that would be confusing.
Okay.
Because I think what Commissioner Mulder, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, was saying was to rely on the drought provisions of the ordinance rather than going down this path.
Okay. That, that's fine. Then we can just leave it as is. I mean, I think it, you know, it stands that we are in, it has been, it's a declaration that we are in an extreme drought. So, moving on, the other edit was, I believe, in the second paragraph, second sentence, Commissioner Levy would like to see while your commission be edited to our commission. And I believe that may be it, actually.
If, I appreciate you're trying to capture the edits that were mentioned. Right above that one that I mentioned in the sentence, the first sentence of that second paragraph, one condition that we have recommended, I, I think the director pointed out that we really have required.
Required.
Not recommended. So, that's a change that he suggested. Finally, one other small point, just clarifying, word change in, that I didn't get out, is in the short paragraph that follows that one, the one that begins, "We are seeking your input." I thought it, the, the, the word complete at the start of the second line is confusing to me. "We are seeking your input and thoughts on our request to have the Planning and Building Department complete permits." I think we mean condition permits, or rather, I think it would be clearer if we said condition there. So, that was the only other clarifying edit that I wanted to suggest.
Both good.
Okay. And then I don't know if it's necessary or not to specifically include ponds as rainwater catchment. I think that that is probably understood, but if the director thinks we should, then we could do that.
Ponds are a great form of rainwater catchment.
Okay. Okay. Then I think that, that covers it.
Well, on that point, though, would it be, would it be clarifying if, since we, since we do include ponds as a form of rainwater catchment, would it be helpful to, to say that? Or is it possible that this would be understood to mean storage only in tanks and not in ponds? I, I guess I, I like the idea, if you were going to suggest putting the word ponds in, to clarify that that's included in water, in rainwater catchment and storage. I don't, I don't know exactly where it would be the best place to put it, though.
I think it's always better to be specific.
I mean, we could say rainwater catchment stored in tanks or in ponds.
Exactly. If, I think that would be great if we mentioned the word.
So, maybe at the end of.
I, I would just ask, what else is there?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't think.
There's nothing else.
Okay.
Guys, this motion is getting pretty funky.
Guys, this motion is getting pretty funky.
Okay, we can leave it out, then. That's, that's fine, it's, it's there.
Yeah, I, I would say, just because that's part of the, the definition of, of catchment. Storage.
Rain-water catchment, and we all know what that includes.
One question, you wanted to change in the third paragraph, Planning and Building Department complete permits to, what was the language?
Condition.
Condition. Instead of complete.
All right. So we, oh, go ahead, Thomas. No, I, that's...
Are you going?
Okay, is there anybody who would like to second Melanie's motion?
I'll second.
All right. Is there some discussion?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. I support you going forward. I know this discussion needs to be had at the Board of Supervisors level to really provide some clear guidance as far as what we should be doing here. I feel it'd be better to ask in the last paragraph to establish a policy to require rain-water catchment, water storage, or water storage in addition to utilization of groundwater wells, or to rely on mitigating the effects of the drought with the drought task, task force formed. So, I mean, somewhere if you tie back in there, I could support, because it would give a three-pronged approach to, do we support rain-water catchment? Do we support water storage? Or do we support mitigating the drought concerns with the existing ordinance through the Drought Task Force?
The only thing Director thought that was a bad idea.
No, I think that's fine.
I, okay, I... How's the maker of the motion with that?
Yes, I, I'm fine with that, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, it gives a little bit more clarity, and I think it also helps delineate rain-water catchment, perhaps from other forms of water storage or other sources of water storage as well.
And helps them then to make a choice then, at the supervisor's level then.
I, I like it as well, because we've, we've kind of laid out the case for the requirement for 20% water storage, but in that last, in that last sentence, we're sort of giving it to them in the form of a broader choice. So I think, I think that works for me, I think it's a good suggestion.
And that's why I was asking for it, because it does, it puts that bigger question in their court. Do they want rain-water catchment? Do they want water storage? Or do they want to leave the ordinance as it is and go through the Drought Task Force use for mitigating the effects? I don't disagree in I, that there is a drought and we need to do something about it, there's mitigating, there's ways to mitigate that within the ordinance. So that's where everyone, and everyone has a different opinion, there's, there's an issue, and everyone here is differing on how to mitigate that issue, I think is really where we come down to.
I think that's great compromise.
And I think the Board, the, there's already been a decision to help mitigate it by giving grants to those individuals that need additional storage, so I think that's a form of mitigation and a recognition that is needed.
Right, and as the Director pointed out, it's already incentivized under 1.0 or the CCMLUO in the sense that you won't be curtailed if you do have that water storage, whether that be from rain-water catchment or other, other sources.
Go ahead, Director.
So I just wanted to clarify and make sure that the Commission gives this thought, is that in the paragraph that was modified with the condition permits, it says, "We are seeking your input and thoughts on our request to have the Planning and Building Department condition permits to require water storage that represents 20%."
Thank you.
Could do that with a little bit of a pronged approach there.
Rain-water catchment there, yes.
How would you like, do you have an idea on...
It's rain-water catchment.
Rain-water ca, okay.
That's what we thought, right? That's a good catch, John.
Ha, 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 catch.
We don't want to give them an out. All right. Okay, we have a motion, hopefully none of them watch our meetings.
Oh, it's all recorded.
Okay. Any further discussion? See you, Nun Tripp. Roll call vote, please.
Alan Dondieu.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Melanie McCawber.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
And Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Very thankful to say, motion carries unanimous, and that's awesome. I'm glad that we're sending it unanimous to the supervisors. Very good discussion, guys.
And that was, thanks, thanks especially to Commissioner Mulder for, for trying to find a way to phrase it in a way that you could vote yes for. That, that matters a lot.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you, much improved as well.
Yes. All right, is there any...
I want the same treatment in the future, okay?
Do our best.
Yes.
Remind us. Remind us when you're pulling that card. Okay. Anything else, Director? No? All right, with that...
We are adjourned.